0169.1 and the repeal of school board policy 2130 at the Joanne Idledlett Junior TEC. Today is Monday, November 18th, 2024, and I would like to call this special meeting to order. The time is 5:00 p.m. I ask out of respect for everyone, please silence all electronic devices at this time. Also, if you have any material you wish to share with any board member, please give that to our executive assistant right here, Mrs. Morey. And at this time, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now I call for the adoption of the orders of the day.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
I have to read it first. I haven't gotten to do that yet. I didn't ask for the motion yet, but that's all right. All right. Seeing as there are no consent items to approve, we will move into the public hearing for the adoption of revised school board policies is 0164 Notice of Meetings, 0165 Meetings, 0165.1 Agendas, 0169.1 Participation at Board Meetings, and the Associated Speakers Form and repeal of School Board Policy 2130 Achievement Gap Oversight Group. All right. So this is a special meeting. Special meetings are historically called because of an urgent issue before the Board. According to Florida Statute 1001.372, subsection 1, a special meeting can be called by the Superintendent, the Board Chair, or in this case, a majority of the school board members. Two days' written notice was given for the time and purpose of this meeting. The minutes of today's meeting must set forth the facts regarding the procedure in calling the meeting and signed by the majority of the members that called for the meeting, and needs to be reflected in the minutes. Roberts Rules of Order state that special meetings are special and that they are called only if something important comes up that must be dealt with before the next regular meeting, or the matter is important enough that it needs to be the exclusive reason for the entire meeting. Mr. McDonald, you call for this meeting. Could you please speak to the urgency of this meeting to be reflected in the minutes, please?
The purpose of calling a special meeting was that the public announcement of it had was delayed, actually for all these policies, long after they were approved, and that required that we could not handle this at the last regular business meeting, and this date was the final date in which I could participate in that, and that was the motive for my calling of this meeting.
Okay. The purpose of the public hearing, then, is to adopt the revised school board policies. At this time, I'm going to ask for the Superintendent to please go ahead, and I'm recognizing you to present the items.
Madam Chair, item A is the discussion of the adoption of revised policies 0164, 0165, 0165.1, policy 0169.1, and the repeal of policy 2130. That would be the discussion of the Board. Following that discussion of each of those specific policies, there will be a public hearing in which the public would be invited to come and speak prior to the Board taking action on each of these specific items, or policies.
Okay. So let's take these in one at a time. We'll take policy 0164 Notice of Meetings.
Madam Chair, point of order. Question, and this I don't know. For special meetings, I don't recall, because we don't call them too often. Why aren't citizen comments on here? Is that, is it because, this might be because...
It's here. It's in my notes.
But it's not on the agenda?
Because it's a public hearing. It's part of the notation for the Board Chair to say, I do it before every public hearing.
Oh, you're going to do it within the item itself?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So at the school board business meetings held August 26, 2024, and September 23, 2024, the school board voted to hold a public hearing to consider adoption of the attached revised and repealed district school board policies. The purpose of the revisions and repeal, sorry, is to be consistent with present practice and legislation. The policy change repeal process was followed in accordance with Florida statutes under Florida Administrative Procedures Act, Chapter 120 Rulemaking, and School Board Bylaw 0131. All right. So the first item deals with the notice of meetings, policy 0164. Does any board member like to discuss this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just a comment, because I'm just talking about the changes on here. It says, "Notice is required of all meetings of the Board, whether of general knowledge, in workshops, discussion sessions, special meetings, or closed meetings." Has there been an issue with that, Dr. Moore? I think we have been noticing all meetings.
Correct. We've been noticed.
Okay. I didn't see why that was necessary unless it was just a highlight. And I still have an issue, and this I know has been in our policy for a while, a true emergency, obviously you have to do something quickly, but special meetings should have no less than 24, and preferably at least 72 hours reasonable notice to the public. Sometimes with 24 hours, it does not give our public a good enough time to look at it, review it, so forth, but I understand sometimes with emergencies. So I just wanted to put that out to the Board. Is that enough time? And what your thought is on that?
That's, board members, that's required.
But it's no less than 24 hours. Is that enough time for our public? Is all I'm asking for discussion.
It may not be enough time, but that's what's required of the law. So if there is an emergency, you don't have any other choice but to call it within 24 hours. Ms. Shadak, would you like to speak to that?
I'm through the chair. So with something like a emergency meeting, that would just be for something like a health, safety, or welfare, it's very uncommon, and you would give as much notice as possible, but you would want to give at least 24 hours' notice. So that's something that is not normal procedure. For anything that's a more normal matter, you would do it in your regular business meeting or special meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's look at policy 0165 Meetings. Anyone like to discuss that one? No one? That's the one that has the, turning the cameras on the faces. I think that was the big change on that one. We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on, policy 0165.1 Agendas.
Yeah, just one comment. I still have a concern with the discussion part, where we say that the public cannot speak because we haven't made a decision yet. It's just a discussion. I still think with First Amendment rights, people should have an opportunity to speak. We haven't made a decision yet, so therefore what they say could influence us when we get to an action item on that. I mean, we talk about that. We had a 4-1 vote where we could speak about anything of Board Member matters or First Amendment rights. So I know they're not, discussion items are not to be intended to be propositional or form or action, but we still may hear from some people, and they have a good idea, and we could just listen. So that's my thought on that one.
Anybody else? Okay, I had a question about 14 days in advance. You usually preface way ahead of that, but are you still comfortable with the 14 days in case you had something that had to come up, and you only had a week to give it to us?
Through the chair, if there was a unique situation, I would notify the Board, but as we discussed in workshop with these policies, adhering to that timeline is more than acceptable.
Okay, but the only thing I thought of was in a case of a special meeting, where it's called, and you only have, what is it, two days' advance warning?
So if it's a special meeting, that, A, that's, it's special.
Then you have the right to do two days as well. I just want to make sure that that's written that way.
Yep.
Okay. That's the only question I had. Policy 0169.1, which is participation at board meetings and the Associated Speakers Form. Anybody have a discussion about that? We're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. So, and the repeal of policy 2130, the achievement gap oversight group. Who would like to discuss that one?
I've got a few things to say, just a moment.
Okay.
Just a review in general. Obviously, 2130 was approved by this Board. Four members of the Board were sitting on the Board at that time, 5-0. And then we had an action item come to us on August 26, 2024, added in the orders of the day that made changes to 2130. Board Members were not made aware of this. It's an action item. Even the Attorney General says, "If you're going to add an action item, you should not add something that can be controversial." That is in the sunshine manu, manual. I did not have time to review it at the meeting. Dr. Moore did not agree with, like, to create something that maybe would work for all of us. And anyone can request the original information of all the words that were deleted. The Board sent it to a workshop on September 9, and talked about it with some new recommendations. For me, most changes were not good, especially with taking out the NAACP in general, and taking out the Superintendent on a committee, and that was the main crux of it. Take out the NAACP when this policy was created because of the desegregation order regarding black students. One of the reasons is that we want it to be for all students. And for me, my response to that was, that is what our strategic plan is. The DSEG order is for black students, and this was simply a follow-up policy to the joint plan stating our good faith. Then at the Board meeting in October 21, I voted to amend the amended DSEG Order Policy 2750 written by Dr. Moore to public hearing. I voted for that in case the original one was voted out, 2130, which deals with black children on a federal court case. Dr. Moore recommended we have them both at once, but we do not. The only thing we have on the agenda today is repealing policy 2130. Just a little history again. The policy was approved August 29, 2022, with a 5-0 vote. For two years, not an issue. Actually, we had comments from one citizen that said it was approved with other policies, and it just kind of slipped through. Well, I know I and every Board Member up here will read everything on a Board Agenda, and it did not slip through. We worked on it for months before the Board approval. It was no surprise. And just for the public, basically it says, "When we receive unitary status, we keep doing the work. We are unique, or we are making a promise not only to our black community and NAACP, but to our children." And the court system even said this was unique. This statement, this policy said, "We will not start until unitary status." And one of the reasons is because we're doing the work now with all the students through our strategic plan. This is a really important policy, and we're also stating that we will not put it on the shelf if Superintendent and Board Members change. We're going to keep monitoring it. Again, why is it so important? So people who continue to serve in this Board, come in with a Superintendent or a new Superintendent, the policy will be honored. And it was really exciting when we had a 5-0 vote two years ago. I understand what our attorney said on October 7, which is an issue with, is there a revision, or is this a complete deletion? At that time, no one thought about what is revising, or if we delete it, do we not need a supermajority? So in my opinion, that was just a ploy on words. We put it in there. We have any revisions, there would need to be a supermajority. But I'm getting different information on that from the attorneys. September 23, Board Meeting, starting at 3:28, the discussion began. The vote was 5-0 for the adoption of the revisions of 2130. There is no revision. It was mentioned to delete it by a Board Member, but Dr. Moore stated, "You can't just throw it out" policy. It was unanimous, thank goodness, to take it to workshop. Not approval of it then, and we did so on October 7 with looking at a new policy. Obviously, a Board Member wanted to finish just before he left. Even though I like Dr. Moore's new one, again, we're not voting on that tonight, we're just looking at the repeal, I think the original 2130 was much more detailed and specific for me. It talked about our black students specifically, as this is a federal court order for black students. And the new policy, 2750, which has been presented to us, talked about all students at the top with our strategic plan. We monitor so that we don't have segregation, operate a unitary system, the newly amended one, as it states components in sections of the 2018 joint plan. So now we have 2130 that we're looking to repeal, and then 2750, which Dr. Moore has shown us, but they both say, "We will start when we have unitary status." So that cannot be the argument anymore. That cannot be the argument. The main difference is 2130 is for black students, as it should be, because it's a follow-up to the DSEG order. If anybody thinks for one minute, "We're not here for all students," take a look at our strategic plan. Take a look at what we do every day. Dr. Moore updates the Board at least once a month on where we are with our monitoring and what we want to achieve. So I just ask Board Members, please encourage you to look carefully at the real differences here. Let's keep 2130 never an issue for two years. Let's make sure that we honor that, and that we never, ever put it on the shelf. An issue since the very first filing of Sharpton versus Indian River County. Look at the port commitment in each policy. Board Member who proposed not having 2130, and what we're doing in general with this policy. You know, I've been in the community for 40 years, 44 years. I've looked at it. This has been over 60 years as far as DSEG, and you know, I have hope that someday we will receive unitary status, and I hope that the Board will consider keeping this as it was, because it is specific to what we need to do for our students. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Board Members like to speak? Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I thank Member Jones for her comments, and recognize that she also did make comments previously regarding her concern about making changes to this. Going through the history, it was originally proposed as a change to 2130 with some different verbiage. Through the course of this process, we came to the conclusion that, at Dr. Moore's recommendation, a much better and improved policy, which is 2750, was compiled and recommended, and through the course of the discussion, everybody on the Board came to a unanimous agreement that indeed that was a preferable and enhanced version, and that we would replace that by repealing 2130 in its entirety. That was a decision that we made back in October, even at the Chair's exhortation, hoping or loving that we would reach unanimous decision, which we did. So that is before us now, not just as the repeal of 2130, but as the repeal of 2130 in anticipation of adding 2750. And it is only, I think, because of timing, the legal restrictions as to when we're allowed to do that, that we were not doing them together all at one time, which would be most appropriate. However, I'm confident that the Members of the Board who remain would support and will approve that when it comes before them.
Dr. Pascoe, would you like to speak? Ms. Rosaria? Okay. Since you mentioned me, I'm going to respond to that. You mentioned that it's most appropriate to remove a policy while you bring in the new one. You're right. That is most appropriate, and that is what I said when I said I hope we could have a 5-0 vote on that. Because if the new policy is going to replace the old policy, what is the emergency to remove a policy a month before we approve the other policy? That is why I ask, what's the emergency here?
Question to me?
Yeah.
The emergency, as I stated before, is this, we started this a while back. We had some problems with timing and scheduling of this to meet the 28-day notice. But as I started this, and as I will be leaving the seat, it was my intention to bring this as far to conclusion as possible. I would prefer to be able to vote on 2750 and see that to its completion. But I, also, if I thought there was any chance that it would not be voted on following this repeal, I would never recommend doing one without the other. I'm confident that it will be voted in favor of, and I think that Dr. Moore and his team did an excellent job in compiling a policy that will be very, very effective and do the job well.
Okay. So there was one other attachment on here, and I was going to ask about it because I wasn't sure why this was on here. It says, "2130 Achievement Gap Oversight Committee."
Through the chair, just as a historical document, as I think it was Doc Jones referenced, that was the initial revisions that the Board discussed. So in theory, it holds no other purpose. It's not something you're voting on tonight, but from a transparency standpoint, you can look back and see the ordering of actions that took place.
Okay. So the only vote is to repeal the policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Jones?
Just before the vote, and I just want it made in a public statement. When this policy was written two years ago, it said, "Any revisions have to be a supermajority." But Ms. Shadak, I think you said in a workshop that repealing it, deleting it, is not a revision. Would you just answer that for the public, please?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. So the way that this policy is written, it says that, which is unusual, this is the only policy we have that says that to revise it, it requires a supermajority, and that would be true if we were amending it. But it does not say that for adoptions or repeals, and since we are repealing it, it would be your normal majority vote, the way I read it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No, I just think that this is a little bit of a, not a good reason to not have a supermajority. Again, when I helped present this, again, it was to make sure that if we have a Board or Superintendent come along, that they will honor this in good faith. And I think if you all look back at 2130 in general, that was written for good faith and for these students. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Moore, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state statutes?
Yes, ma'am.
We are now recessing this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. Dr. Moore, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The public is invited to address the issue at this time. We do have some people that wrote their forms. However, anyone can come up to the microphone after them. All right. The first speaker is Dr. Jacqueline Jacobs.
Ms. Baron Borg, Members of the Board, Dr. Moore, I will speak to policy 2130, which is specific to matters regarding achievement of unitary status by the courts under the 1960-70 desegregation order and subsequent court decisions related to that status. It is not a statement of academic achievement for all students. You already have those in your strategic plan. Policy 2130, as you know, was approved two years ago by a 5-0 vote, including four of you. If this meeting constitutes a public hearing on the repeal of policy 2130, the inclusion of the revised language in the agenda indicates that revisions are also under consideration, and therefore the ability to repeal must follow a failed vote of any, on any revisions. I have the following comments on the proposed changes. One, they ignore the purpose of policy 2130 and the 60-year history of work to address the achievement gap under the joint agreement, which has consistently and specifically addressed a gap between white and black students. Progress has been made and agreed upon by the judge who has oversight. Two, removing references to the court order and words such as diversity and inclusion are, in my opinion, popular political rhetoric promulgated without understanding of the history and importance of those terms. Three, the intent of 2130 was to define specific actions to be taken at such time as the court determines unitary status for the district. It was not a written policy on overall student achievement. Four, the language in the attached revision is a general statement with minimal clarification of the concept of achievement gap, a gap generally defined as between two groups based on race, economic level, gender, and/or parental education. While gaps may exist across all these criteria, policy 2130 is specific to the joint agreement. Five, policy 2130 specifically states, in part, and I quote, "Any revisions must be adopted in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act and by a supermajority vote of the Board. Anyone, any changes to 2130, including repeal, which is revisionist on its face, therefore must require a supermajority vote. The public will expect you to provide serious consideration to the purpose of policy 2130, and to follow your defined policy when you vote. A vote to repeal the policy specific to the joint agreement could result in the district being sued by individuals and groups, thus taking financial resources from the classroom where they are needed. I encourage you not to revise or repeal policy 2130 in acknowledgement that it is specific to the joint agreement. If you want a committee to oversee all student achievement, then create one. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. Angela Bowling is next.
Good evening, Board, Chairman, Baron Borg. First, regarding policy 0165 on meetings, I'm concerned that there is a sentence that reads, "Any changes to policies or procedures regarding public participation, board meetings or workshops, speaker forums, or the Board Agenda must be presented to the Board as a proposition and pass with a majority vote." And I'm concerned because I think that there should be extra language in there, if that's going to be adopted, that says, "Pass with a majority vote," unless the policy that's being changed specifies that it can only be revised with a supermajority vote. Seems to me that this would be a way of slipping in a change to the policy, which I believe is a hundred, you know, when you change something, take it, when you delete something, you're making a 100% revision of that policy. So that's, now, regarding policy 2130, I don't believe that we should delete it. Its purpose is to continue to honor the components of the DSEG plan for at least five years after the judge determines that the district has achieved unitary status. It creates a work group that includes four members appointed by the NAACP, which is sensible and logical, because it's the group that is most knowledgeable and informed about the needs of the black students, and who have firsthand experience of the issues faced by black students. There's been a very long history of injustice, mistreatment, and oppression perpetrated against blacks in our own community, and we shouldn't be afraid to invest more time in rectifying the damages and correcting any damaging patterns that exist. Of course, replace, yeah, and then the 100% revision thing. So I think it should not be able to be deleted without four Members voting for it. And lastly, yeah, with regard to another part of 0165, having the faces of all speakers on the camera, I don't think we need to encourage people from the citizenship to come and stand here and have their faces on the camera, because it's just going to lend to more campaigning from this location, and not be really conducive towards business meetings. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Arlene Jamison is next. Grace Morris, you'll be on deck.
Good evening. My name is Arlene Jamison. I'm a member of the Education Champions of Indian River County. I'm here to say that I fail to see the logic of repealing policy 2130. It was passed by unanimous vote of 5 to 0 to ensure, once unitary status was achieved, the district would still continue to eliminate the achievement gap between black and white students. We've made good strides since, so why dismantle it? The suggestion to remove two Members of the NAACP from the work group seems both harsh and illogical. It totally diminishes and dilutes the purpose of the program, since it was formed specifically to eliminate the achievement gap for black students. As far as improving achievement for all students, is it not the purpose of the strategic plan, not 2130? Plus, what is the need for school board members to appoint IRC residents from their districts? School Board Members represent the district, so I don't know why that has to be added to. That's why school board members were elected. And eliminating the words diverse, equitable, and inclusive merely serves to weaken the policy, not strengthen it. The only possible positive change I can see in the new policy is to allow Dr. Moore to appoint two staff members rather than the current one, if he so chooses. In short, what's the old adage, "If it ain't broke, why fix it?" Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Grace Morris is next. Dana King is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Grace Morris. Ten years ago, I retired from my position as an elementary school principal in Simsbury, Connecticut, and moved to Vero Beach. You can take the educator out of the school, but you can't take children out of the heart of the educator. I am keenly interested in the education of the children in Indian River County and frequently attend board meetings to keep abreast of the decisions made by the board and the policies and practices which are generated from those decisions. I'd like to begin by saying I am elated that Amendment 1, which would have required members of this district school board...
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to speak on what we're talking about. This is a special meeting, so you have to speak to this policy.
It is kind of related, if you would allow me.
It has to be on this policy.
Okay. Then I'm gonna move on to saying that tonight, because I was, what I was gonna talk about is the politics involved in this decision, on making this decision on 2130. Tonight, the board will be discussing Policy 2130. Two years ago, this policy was approved by the board by a vote of five to zero. The policy will allow us to continue to honor the desegregation plan of 2018. My question is, why is the repeal or revision of this policy a topic of discussion by the board this evening? The timing of this discussion, by all appearances, is politically motivated. Rushing to abandon or even revise this policy is purely a political move that is not in the best interest of children, specifically our black students, though it may be in the interest of advancing a particular political position. In conclusion, I feel it is critical that the Board of Education of Indian River County make the welfare of children its one and only concern. And as a board, as board members gather to discuss relevant issues such as Policy 2130 and make critical decisions that will impact the children of Indian River County, they leave the politics at the door. Thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. Dana King is next, and Susan Stoller is on deck.
Good evening. I think we can all agree that all children deserve a sound, quality education. They deserve an equal opportunity to study and learn so they can flourish, grow, and become productive citizens of our community. But that hasn't always been the case here in this county. Let's not forget the original purpose of the order you seek to amend. It was written to help alleviate longstanding disparities in the education of our black children. Have those disparities disappeared in the decades since the 67 DSEG order and subsequent revisions? Of course not. They still exist, as does the moral imperative to alleviate those disparities. I have listened to this board celebrate the narrowing of the academic gap between white and black kids. Is it closing? Somewhat, yes. But the numbers started so low for black kids that they had nowhere to go but up. So, what is this revision really about? Another old saying, if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, and smells like a duck, it's white supremacy. And if you don't know what the definition of that is, it's a belief that white people are superior and should dominate society to the exclusion and expense of other racial and ethnic groups. If you wanted to comply with the original DSEG order, and I have said this before, you would. But you haven't. Yet you still think that white kids are missing out on something. Black student academic achievement is and has been, in this county, inadequate. And I'd like to know what studies point to the changing with this revision to that order? What's gonna change for the kids? This is the height of white supremacy. Denying the needs of black children in education because you have somehow determined that they are getting something at the expense of white kids. If this passes, and at the very least, those who vote for it, we will all know who you are and what you believe. And you will further enable generations of white supremacy in Indian River County. There is no legal standing to revise this order because there is no harm being done to white kids due to the DSEG orders. In fact, it's just the opposite that exists, which is why the 67 DSEG order and the subsequent revisions were written in the first place. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak? Oh, sorry, yes, Susan Stoller, sorry.
Good evening, board members, superintendent.
Could you put that mic down a little lower?
What row? Here we are, board members, school leaders, and the community, gathered on the eve of the installation of a new board member and a changing board. For what purpose are we called together? But to repeal Policy 2130, a policy proudly adopted unanimously with a five-zero vote in August of 2022, just two short years ago. 2130 is a policy that shows good faith commitment to the 1964 Supreme Court decision mandating that all public schools achieve unitary status. My understanding is not all parameters of the unitary status have to date been achieved in our district. And that Policy 20, 2130 pledges to achieve unitary status and, once achieved, pledges to maintain it moving forward. So, tonight, what is the motivation for dismantling the district's policy, which, in my opinion, is exemplary act of awareness and good faith? The only reason that occurs to me is political. Despite that less than two weeks ago, Florida voters upheld the Florida Constitution by defeating ballot Amendment 1, thus at least attempting to assure that school board candidates and therefore, school boards remain nonpartisan. At this 11th hour, let's keep our focus on the kids and on our A1 rating. I ask that tonight, the board take the legal and moral high road by continuing their support of Policy 2130 in its original form. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Is there any other individual representing an organization or their personal input would like to speak at this time?
Good afternoon, Board, Superintendent. Do I need to state my name?
Probably because you didn't speak, yeah, or you didn't sign up, so.
Okay, Kevin Browning.
Kevin Browning, we all know.
Thank you, sir. The work group has been making progress, and we want to continue it. Yes, all students deserve a quality education. And if you're familiar with the DSEG order, the orders of '67, that's 1967, '94, 2018, all refer to black students and what has been occurring with black students since the history of the school district of Indian River County and across the country. So, let's please, with these policies, don't try to usurp the progress that the DSEG work group is making. Because as you can still see, if you're looking at it, over 60% of the students have been assigned to the alternative school are black students. And most of the disciplinary actions are still occurring. Black students are still at the bottom, which is why that DSEG order is focusing on the progress that black students need to make. The district is making progress in becoming what I think could be probably the best district in the state. We need to keep that up and not bring divisive policies that cut out the NAACP or cut out another group, something that we can all agree on. All students are created equal, and we need a board that stands together on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Please state your name.
Thomas Kenny, Policy Media, Moms for Liberty. Regards to 2130, there've been a lot of arguments made here about its usefulness, but it's never been used because it's never been activated. It doesn't get activated allegedly until we reach unitary status at a court, and then it gets activated. There's no use to this policy, period. It doesn't help a single soul in this school district. And it definitely doesn't help you guys from a political standpoint. When it was passed, it was never debated. It went through consent for the public hearing, and it was passed with a group of policies. In that group was the leading policy at the time, the Book Review Committee. The Book Review Committee usurped all debate. So, this policy's finally being debated in a justified way, in a, in a great manner, full transparency. And we have seen that it's useless. Really, I mean, at the body, at the end of the day, this policy is completely useless. It has nothing to do with the court order. People have said they've had it. There's been discussions apparently with the judge and some people. But there's nothing in the documentation in the court that the public face can see regarding Policy 2130 and this unitary status DSEG order work case at the federal court. There's no mention of this policy. So, this policy really is a charade. I don't know how else to put it. It doesn't help. What Mr. McDonald did propose was to amend it to help the kids now. And then, Dr. Moore said, "We're already helping the kids now," and showed some really good data. And at that point, it was about, oh, hey, then we need to write a policy that when we do reach unitary status, we'll keep doing the reporting and we'll keep making sure we're engaged in the idea of being a unified school district. And that's a great policy to have. But nowhere and no way does 2130 even remotely do anything in regards to the school system. Till some future date. And since we've been in this case for 60 years, when is that future date? Nobody on this board, no lawyer, nobody in this room can tell me that, or anyone else. And at that point, you gotta ask yourself, well, why do you even have this? There's no reason for it. There is reason to help kids now, always is. And I think Dr. Moore has done a commendable job in doing that. The A District, the As and Bs schools across the board, the achievement gap three and a half times faster growing amongst black population as opposed to white and Hispanic.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, a lot of that is amazing.
Thank you.
So, I rest my case.
Anyone else like to speak on the policy? Okay. Then I'm gonna conclude that the announced public hearing on November 18th, 2024, on the adoption of the revised Policy 0164, notice of meetings, Policy 0165, meetings, Policy 0165.1, agendas, Policy 0169.1, participation at board meetings and the associated speakers forum, and the repeal of Policy 2130, achievement gap oversight group, has been conducted pursuant to notice, and ample opportunity to address the issue has been provided to all. The board meeting is reconvened at this time. Okay, public hearing, adoption of revised Policies 0164, 0165, 015.1, 0169.1, and the repeal of Policy 2130. I will call for motion to the revisions of all of these items. May I get a motion to call for the vote?
So moved.
Mr. McDonald?
I'll second.
Ms. Rosario? All right. So, we're gonna vote on all of the policies except for the oversight group. Is that correct? That's why we're doing this? Okay. So, on Policies 0164, 0165, 0165.1, and 0169.1, we are voting as a group to either approve or not approve all of them at once? Is that what we're doing? Or bifurcating? I'm asking the attorney.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So, the way you have it written, it would just be one motion that approves the adoption of the amendments to 0164, 0165, 0165.1, 0169.1, and repeal of Policy 2130.
That's a separate motion on here?
Oh, the way it's written on the agenda is that they're all together. You could do it separately, but also, you can always motion for that, or you could motion for a change to that, such as an amendment to that motion, where, you know, you approve some, you don't approve others.
Okay, so I'd like to vote, unless somebody wants to bifurcate all of them? You're good? Okay, then we're gonna vote for the first four policies at once, and then we'll vote for the repeal. Do I need to do anything else? Because that's how it's written in my notes.
From what I understand, I'm sorry.
Hold on one second. Is that the way, under the motion that they just gave me, participation are for those policies? Can we do it that way, or do I need to restate it?
I am not clear on what the motion and second is for then, so I think it should be restated what the motion and second are for.
Okay, so I'm asking for a motion for...
The motion was to approve all of the policies as listed in C.
Except for 2130?
No.
No.
The motion was to approve all the policies as listed in C.
Okay, hold on.
Question?
Yes.
We have approval of four policies and repeal of the other one. I wanna make sure the approval of the policies, that's fine as a group. The repeal needs to be a separate vote.
I agree.
It has to be a separate vote. Otherwise, you'll be saying, "I'm not for any of these if you do it all at once." It has to be a separate vote.
And I believe I read through all of those. I did not read repeal of Policy 2130. Can we look back?
That's how it's listed on the agenda.
That is not how I called it, though.
That's how it's listed on the agenda.
Just to be transparent, what I'm hearing is you would have to make a motion to do the four policies, the policies themselves, get a second vote on that, and then do the repeal policies separate.
Okay, so then, when we have...
What's on the script is...
Could it match what we have to do, please?
Right, and I think that's, that's the issue.
Because the script says, read these four policies first, get a motion in a second, which is what I did, and then do the Policy 2130. That's how it's written on my script, so that's why I read it that way. Okay? Okay. So, I'm gonna call then for an amendment to that motion. I'm gonna ask that we amend it to just approve Policies 0164, 0165, 0165.1, 0169.1 at the same time and have a separate vote for the repeal of Policy 2130. May I get a second on the amendment?
Second.
Any adjust, any discussion on the amendment? Okay, a call for a vote on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye? Aye? All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right, so we are back to the first motion, which I called, 0164, 0165, 0165.1, 0169.1. So, now I need to, somebody needs to amend that motion to include the Policy 2130 achievement gap.
No, you don't need to do that because it was already on, it's how you called it from the first place. You called an amendment to bifurcate four policies and then the repeal.
Okay, so...
Your motion didn't pass, and so you just...
Ms. Rosario, respectfully, when I called the original motion and I got the original motion, I called off the four policies. I did not call off the other policy. All you have to do is amend it to include it. That's all it takes, not an argument. It just takes amending it to include the other policy. That's all it does.
I heard you say all of them. We were here for the purpose of, and you called all those policies and the repeal.
Instead of having an argument over it? Dr. Jones?
Just a point of order, what Dr. Moore said earlier. Obviously, people know how I feel on repealing this. But if we're gonna do it all together, then I would say no to all of them. We need to separate them. We, if we need to go back to bifurcate each one, but we, the public needs to know how we vote...
On each one of them.
On each one. That is transparent. You know, I still have issues with the supermajority, but the lawyer has stated her statement. But we, we have to do these separately. The four are approved, and the fifth one is to repeal. When do you ever put a repeal as a vote with an approval? I mean, I think we should be transparent to our public. Are you approving the policies that were there for approval? Are you repealing this one? I think it's important, as a board, that we're transparent to our community on what we're doing. Dr. Moore, any comments on that? I know you say it's up to the board, but as a superintendent, when this was put on there, and there were questions on this, even on the agenda, we have those approvals and then the repeal.
I will say this, if we don't get it right, and you assume that I said that, and we vote on it, then... we vote on it, then we didn't vote on it. Just saying.
We have an attorney who can verify.
Okay.
So...
I read the script. I read the exact script.
So...
Script is not our posted agenda.
Through the chair, so what we have done so far is we have, the chair asked for a motion on the adoption of revised policy 0164, 0165, 0165.1, and 0169.1. We have the motion by Mr. McDonald, the second by Ms. Rosario. Then there was a motion to amend it by the chairwoman, which was to vote on the adoption of those four policies and the repeal of policy 2130 separately, which got a second, but then did not get a vote by the majority of the board. So we are back to the original motion, which has been seconded, which is just on the adoption of the four policies. And so at this point, you can discuss and vote on those, or you could make another...
So if we go with the original motion right now, we're only approving those top four policies, correct?
As, as it's been stated so far, that was what the motion was.
That's what I'm trying to explain to somebody, but...
No, something's wrong.
Yeah.
She wouldn't have, I'm sorry, Ms. Shattuck, she wouldn't have made an amendment to ask for those four policies to be separate from the repeal policy if the original motion wasn't all of these together.
I asked for bifurcation, just a clarification for my amendments, to vote on them each separately. That's what I asked for.
And so I think at this point, if you wanted to do that as well, you could make a motion to amend to vote on each item separately, and then you would vote on each of these items separately.
That's what I asked for. And they voted it down.
No, you didn't. You asked for all four of them together and then the repeal separate.
Okay, that's fine. Let's just vote. And then when you read it back and you see that we didn't vote for that last policy, it won't be changed. That's fine, Ms. Rosario. You think you're correct on it, that, we'll just vote on it that way.
Point of order, since I, since I made the motion, I made the motion for approval of all the items in C, I expected that would include all the items listed on the agenda in C.
As long as the attorney agrees with when they play it back, what was said, it doesn't matter what's printed on there, it's what is said and voted on that matters.
But my motion was to approve all the items in C.
Okay, all your items in C.
Yes.
I don't see a C. I see three public hearing.
You're not looking at the agenda.
I got the wrong, I got the...
It's in the agenda.
Point of order, please.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Three C.
Three C.
Point of order.
Yes.
If, if we vote on the current motion afterwards, can a second motion be made to approve the final item, which has not been moved yet?
Thank you.
Say that again, Dr. Poska, please. Can you restate it for adoption, sorry?
Basically, if we vote on the current item, which is the approval of the four policies, can, after that vote, can we make a second motion to approve the repeal policy?
That's, that's what I wanted, yeah. So yes, through the chair, if you have only voted on the adoption of the four policies, then I would say you would need to do that because it's still on your agenda for a vote. So...
Can I call the question?
Thank you. Call the question. The question's been called. The motion's been made. How shall you all vote?
Aye.
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 No.
Well, he just called the motion on the four policies, correct?
This is the first one.
That's the first one, right. Just on the first one.
Okay, so you're amending that.
Nothing's been amended.
Okay. Okay.
We approved the motion.
Got it. Four one.
All you gotta do is...
Okay. Do you wanna make another motion?
Well, it's still active business, so I think it's your...
Yeah. I'm gonna call for a motion to approve the repeal of policy 2130, achievement gap oversight group.
So moved.
Is there a second? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three two. It's repealed. Okay, so before I close this meeting, there is a meeting tomorrow, like was stated, and there is a workshop that items that I had asked for got put on to that workshop. I am removing my items from that workshop in the spirit of board unity. Board members should be able to discuss sensitive items as a board to fully understand the intent of the item. Workshop agenda items should be able to be discussed so that the community knows everything before making judgment. Putting emails out to the public without allowing a fellow board member to speak on the topic isn't acting with civility. We should be civil to each other and respectful. Let them discuss items fully at a workshop before people comment or tell us how to vote. After discussing items during a workshop, if a board member wants to inform the public of the workshop discussion, that is appropriate, and other board members should be welcome to listen to the, the public's opinion. So I just wanted to close with that. I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. It is 5:56.